Councilman Randy Allison Bolivar, I assume you will call.
Heavenly Father, tonight I said two things in my heart. First, the violence experienced in our city this week. I pray, Lord, that you will punish this violence quietly with God. I pray for all of us, Lord, in the city and the surrounding area because when there's outbursts of like this, it doesn't just affect a small handful of people. It touches all our lives at different levels and different ways. Lord, I thank you tonight that we have public servants and we have police, Lord God, our police, our fire, our streets and parks, our codes, Lord, to go out and interact every day with the public, and I thank you for your protection and your defense, and I pray continually for your judgment. Father, I pray for this nation, Lord, for becoming more violent as a people and a society that ends in terrible failure. I pray that we'll turn away from the violence that captures us in so many ways, become more people that are peaceful and kind and generous on the way. The Lord tonight brings us to a quarter with three quarters of the year. We have a lot of work to do in that last quarter and important things to do, Lord, for our city and our citizens. Give us wisdom, grace, and understanding, Lord, and the courage to do the things that need to be done with this city on sound financial and fiscal basis for this year and years to come. I ask of Jesus that.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Franklin, would you call the board please?
Here.
I'm here.
Mr. Rafferty.
Here.
Mr. Belliszi.
Here.
Mr. Byer.
Here.
Ms. Meiling.
Here.
Mrs. Pax.
Here.
Mr. Yoder. Here. We have a three second tonight, and it's good to see everybody. Item three, approval of city council meeting minutes dated September 15, 2022. Is there a motion in a second?
So, second.
Motion in a second, any comments or questions for those of council members? You can see none, Mrs. Franklin, motion please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Rafferty.
Yes.
Mr. Belliszi.
Yes.
Mr. Byer.
Yes.
Ms. Meiling.
Mrs. Pax.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. Item four, limited courtesy of the Senate, that was tonight. Item five, due presentation from fellow associates for a quarterly update after Mayor Slaughter.
Mr. President, President, that's good to see you. Members of council and administration, I guess now you have members of the county here with us to give their quarterly update, which was last year in April, and since then we've had significant progress. They've helped us with on the levy first and foremost, among other items. So I'll turn on them and then I'm forward to them on that, and what else we've worked on, they've worked on. Let's go.
Thank you, Mayor Slaughter, President Miller, Vice President Katz, council member. Appreciate the opportunity to be here with you personally to deliver a quarterly report. I'm joined by my colleague, Anthony Bartikle, and just in case anyone forgets, I'm Tom Keller with Keller Partners and Companies, who are based in Washington, DC, and we are the city's federal government relations attorney. A lot has happened since our paper report, and I would love to just go over each of those items, but the good news is we're making good progress on behalf of the city. We think by the end of this year, we're going to have a fantastic return on investment for the city, and we have excellent momentum going into not only the fall, but next year. So just turning to the report now, I have three items to report on. The first item is the Levy Risk Assessment Project. That's going to be conducted by the Army Corps of Engineers, and the good news is that's going to start in the next couple of weeks. So we're going to see a cadre of US Army Corps of Engineers folks here in New York in the next couple of weeks, beginning this process. And if you recall, this came out of a community meeting with some of the council members here, with the mayor, with the county, with the water authority, as well as with FEMA and the Army Corps of Engineers top leaders, and then Congressman Keller coordinated all this. So, you know, now we've gotten to this point, it's been a whole year, but I think we're finally making progress, and it is exciting because the whole purpose behind this is to bring the levy to compliance and sort of be certified eventually and credited. And if we are able to have this risk assessment done in the way that I think it will be done, it could potentially save millions of dollars for the city. The next item is we're excited about what we're doing with Congress, the funding that's coming through Congress. Right now, in a House appropriations bill, which passed a House appropriations committee, we have eight million dollars dedicated for the levy. Our thinking is what's going to happen is this will be passed at some point, probably in December, and signed by the president, which would mean we would see that money probably in the first quarter, or maybe at the latest, maybe the beginning of the second quarter, I should. I think this is going to align possibly very well with what the risk assessment is as that looks forward and as we try to work on drawing down some of that time. But it's exciting. I really want to thank Congressman Keller for taking a week here on devoting all of his community project funding specifically for the levy. I also want to thank Senator Casey and his staff because they devoted X number of dollars to about three million dollars towards the levy. And but in the final analysis, it looks like everyone's going to agree to that big number. So that's exciting. The third item I wanted to talk about was the mayor had meetings in Washington in May, May 9th and 10th, and we met with the congressional delegation, and I thought they were excellent meetings. This is something that we continue to do in Washington. It's very important to have those relationships continue. We're going to have a new senator, we're going to have two new members of Congress in the House representing this area, and it would be very important for us to get into into those meetings early, and so I'm hoping that the mayor can be able to come to Washington, I think, probably in the first quarter of next year, before meetings. Just in terms of next steps and some of the action items that we'll be working on for this fall and into next year, we're going to continue to engage the US Army Corps of Engineers to follow along this risk assessment, and it's important that we continue to report to the congressional delegation as to the progress that we're making. It's very important that we include those federal legislators. We're going to continue to mobilize the congressional delegation to do what they can to push this eight million dollars, you know, through the appropriations process, which is always a crazy process. We do know that at some point, probably around December 16th, or sometime shortly after that, we're going to see those meetings passed, hopefully, and the president will sign those at all. We need to prepare for next year in terms of a congressional request, and so again, early next year, we're going to have a mayor come to Washington, but before that, we're going to be working with the city on what the primary needs will be. And then there are a number of federal grants that we'll be working on on behalf of the city. There is the brick grant that's going to be coming up. That has a due date on it of November 16th. We do have some project ideas for that. We have a DOJ crisis intervention grant that we'd like to work out, seems timely, and there are DOT, EPA, and cybersecurity grants coming out that we should be looking at what those requirements are and how the city can take advantage of perhaps some budget relieving federal dollars to those grant programs. And that is it. That is our report. I really appreciate the council, I appreciate the mayor's great work with us, including John Sander and all the members who have interest in all of this, and we'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Keller. Are there any questions, Mrs. Pax?
Just a couple, please. What is the brick grant?
That is the exact name of that, just so everybody knows. It's called Building Resilient Infrastructure Meeting Grant. That is an infrastructure grant that's conducted through FEMA and that goes through the states and the appliance state.
How much are you going out?
It's typically under a million dollars. It does, yes.
And the other thing, I really want to thank you for making the initial to make our president known, president known in Washington back seven years ago, one friend of the county. You all go to Washington on a regular basis, and our name is out there, and that's so welcoming, so I'm happy to hear that it's happening again, and I'm happy that the mayor is going to Washington, and I'm happy that this process is starting because if my name is announced, we want to be able to. because if my name is a member of the White House, you're cool.
You're exactly right, Council. You know, we have had a number of community members come with us to Washington. We've met at Pentagon, at the headquarters of the US Army Corps of Engineers. We've met, the mayor and I met in Baltimore with the Colonel Chason of the Army Corps. And it's been all out now, but we even met in the West Side of the White House on behalf of this levy. Thinking that somehow a levy in Pennsylvania, one of the largest, the second largest in Pennsylvania, would be of interest to the White House, and apparently it is.
I know, and they're all so excited.
They were, well, it was a exciting move, definitely. A lot of action items came out of that, I can tell you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Allison. The earmark grant, does that money come in a lump sum? Or is there, is it a drawdown type grant?
There is a process, as you can imagine. And with this particular earmark, that will go through FEMA. And the way FEMA works is that will trickle down to the state, and PMA will administer that money. But there's an application process. Once it's approved, the city would be approved for that money. By law, the city would have that funding. But there is a application process, which of course will help the city draw down that money from the state. And sometimes, it depends on the agency. Sometimes they will create a bank account for you where they would put that funding in there and you would draw down based on your invoices. And other times, since we have to work through the state, we would have to work with them to provide them with the invoices and draw down that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for other members?
Maybe Andy Garfinkel can just talk briefly in some details about the grant.
Good evening, council members. So just briefly, one of the priorities obviously is crime in the community. And one of the things that we're looking at is a program called the Justice and Mental Health Collaboration Program. The purpose of that program is to, as a pre-diversion program, working with prosecutors and defense, but also with the police department, with Williams Port Bureau Police. And this is for serious mental illness, mental health disorders, and substance use disorders. I've been engaging with the behavioral health workforce. So there are three programs. One is called Justice and Mental Health Collaboration Program. One is called Connect and Protect, which is more specific to the police department. And one is called the Crisis Intervention Team Training and Implementation, which is a law enforcement training program. And it gives us the ability to potentially embed behavioral health professionals with the Bureau of Police. So we just wanted to share that information as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? The only, the only thing I would ask, can you speak a little bit to that cybersecurity grant program? Is that a new thing?
It is a new program, substantially funded. We do anticipate working with the city to go after that funding. And obviously, we need to have a better understanding of what the challenges have been with the information technology of the city. And so we are working with the mayor and his team on sort of identifying what those challenges are so we can pursue that grant opportunity.
Interesting, okay.
That's one that will go through the state as well.
Okay.
So it's a, it's a federal formula-type grant. It comes from the federal government, it's parceled out through the states. And then I think in this case, it would be PMA. It would be, we would be working with PMA to become an entity.
As more information is released on that, as you start to kind of learn a little bit about that, I'd be interested to see what that looks like as far as just, you know, what that might be able to cover, that kind of thing. I mean, there's, you know, yeah. I mean, just from my experience, I'd be interested to kind of compare what I think, you know, we might need versus what it would cover. I'd just be kind of curious. I mean, I know you mentioned it might help relieve some budgetary things. I mean, that's certainly advantageous, and I'd just like to learn more about what. It's new, so we don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, right.
We'll keep you updated.
Yeah, please do.
When we get more information.
Yeah. Thank you for coming. I know that was a short and sweet report, and that's perfectly fine. There's some good stuff going on, which I'm glad to see. It's good to see your faces. And, you know, anytime you need something from council, you know, we're here. You know how to reach out to me. If we can be of any support in your efforts down there as well, if it helps the city, I think that we are on board as well, so thank you very much.
It does help the city to know that the full council is on board with what we're doing down there. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Item six, Mrs. Frank.
An ordinance in first reading, ARPA transfer ordinance number three.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. I will welcome back Mayor Slaughter.
Yes, good evening again, President Yoder, Vice President Katz, members of council and administration. What you have before you is a resolute, or excuse me, first reading ordinance transfer for a project that we've been talking about for a while now, T. Ross Brothers, a development on the west end of town, up on Mysteria Lane. And this first reading is from the ARPA funds economic development in the amount of sixty-two thousand five hundred and seventy dollars. And we are, for your review here, requesting to economic development for the T. Ross Brothers development, again, in that amount of sixty-two thousand five hundred and seventy dollars. This was originally brought to ERC back in April, I believe, earlier this year. It was reviewed by them. And then the plans and permits and everything were submitted to the city and were reviewed this summer and approved. And now T. Ross Brothers, they are at a point where they are ready to be in the project. And so they did the financial analysis, submitted all of that with updated numbers for review here at city council. And then it was brought before the finance committee on Tuesday. And we do have Mr. Fisher from T. Ross Brothers here with us tonight, who can also answer any questions related to this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Slaughter. This was reviewed in finance. Ms. Mealy?
It might be wise for us to open with a point that I think you made at the end of our meeting in finance, Mr. Fish. This, this project is actually being pursued by a company called Woodman?
Yeah, the main company that's actually going to be doing the project and owns the property up there now is Woodman Heights Development LLC, which consists of several of the principals of T. Ross Brothers, as well as a local contractor from the area. And but obviously, T. Ross Brothers and the staff, I'm the staff person of T. Ross Brothers, and we're putting it together on behalf of the LLC.
I just, I think, I guess, an important point to be clear about publicly is that, you know, if we're talking about dispersing funds to an entity that this, that the funding is going to this particular LLC. Yeah, so we did discuss this in finance committee, and the discussion was overall quite positive. The T. Ross did come before ERC back in April, and the amount of funding they were requesting at that point was somewhat significantly lower, about ten thousand dollars lower, I think. That correlates to an increase in tap fees by the Water Authority between now and then. So the, the specific funding is being utilized to cover about half of the fees related to getting water to the twenty structures and laterals, tap fees, and et cetera. And, and those costs have increased over the course of the year, which is why the amount of funding that is being requested has increased as well. But the other numbers that you probably noticed, as having been submitted, demonstrate that pretty much even with the increased amount of funding being requested, we're still looking at a return on our investment in the form of taxes, which obviously, the city will be receiving one way or the other. Just to be clear. But we'll begin receiving tax revenue from the properties in the fourth year of construction slash sale, even if the city invests the sixty-two thousand dollars upfront in the initiative. This obviously falls under the rubric of economic development with American Rescue Plan Act funds and is helping to spur the construction and sale of twenty new homes on the western side of the city. All very desirable. I think the only point that I made in finance, and I can't speak necessarily for other members of the finance committee, and if they agreed with me, is that this will be, I think, the second week in a row that, no, excuse me, twice in the last month or so, the city has dispersed ARPA funds to developers in the name of economic development. And I would like us perhaps to try and put our heads together and develop an approach that allows, that allows for competing applications and a review of those applications moving forward. That's not to say that both of these projects aren't deserving, but rather to say that, that in the grand scheme of things, I would like to see putting the money where it helps the most and also allowing access to that funding, saying, okay, this is a pool that we're willing to disperse, and this is what we're willing to do with it. So, you know, that was my only comment on this, on this project. I think that this is a great project to fund, but I would like to see us take a more holistic approach to it moving forward. And I will be, I suppose you might say disinclined to support other dispersments through economic development without seeing a little bit more of a plan from within the economic development realm moving forward. I will pass the torch to other members of the finance committee, in case they have anything else to say.
The members of the finance committee.
Come ahead. If I could just add one thing, President Yoder, the only other item I think councilwoman Mealy mentioned was LURDA.
Oh, yes, excuse me.
During the meeting.
Remembered that earlier than that.
Right. And so we did look into that. LURDA sunsets this year, our current LURDA. And it does, the current one does not include residential. And so T. Ross was not looking for any LURDA for this one. Of course, it weren't qualifying because of LURDA. But we are looking to bring a new LURDA. Obviously, we have the conversations with city council, the school district, and the county. And we've been talking for a little while now in ERC previously and currently with folks in the community about a citywide LURDA that would include residential, potentially residential, industrial, and commercial. So this current project that they're conducting would not qualify for LURDA. But that does sunset, and we are looking to start those conversations soon on a new LURDA and what that might look like. Ms. Mealy?
And just remind me again, Derek, the when is it appropriate? I was under the impression that you could apply for a LURDA tax agreement at any point during construction, basically before.
I believe so, but this one is, we don't have a current residential LURDA.
Okay.
So if we, yes, if we pass that one, yes.
Since we're looking, since we're looking at a three-year end project spanning the next three years.
So if they want phase two, for example, to apply for LURDA, and it includes residential, then yes, from my understanding.
I guess that was my point in the finance committee, was we were looking at return on investment numbers related to the full tax value being paid on these properties from the moment of construction slash sale. Obviously, there's already a little bit of gray area there. If they don't all sell them, we won't be receiving necessarily full tax value for a moment. But, but LURDA is a big wrench in the works of the RLI argument, so.
Yeah, and Mr. Fisher did mention during Tuesday's meeting that they've had conversations, and I won't put words in his mouth, but with some potential buyers, and they're optimistic that some may potentially be under contract during construction, so.
Which is great.
Absolutely.
We need the housing.
We need the housing, we need the people in the city. Absolutely. Mr. Byer, this was reviewed in ERC. If there's anything to add from that, it's been a number of months, but.
It was reviewed in ERC. It was my first official ERC meeting, and as I look back to it, it was actually in February that we first started talking about this project. So just to show how long some of these processes can take, but appreciate, yeah, appreciate that we're here at this point and to see the development going on above western terrace, up Mysteria Lane, after I think it's been ten years that that just sat and sat and sat. Now there's two homes there that are occupied. And to see this happen, and then potentially with the other phases that you talked about, is a great addition to see more residents move in because without growth of residents, we won't see any other growth, and we'll continue to stagnate and or decline.
Mr. Allison.
To Councilwoman Mealy's point on the financing of the redevelopment authority, since that's where this money is coming from, and having a plan going forward, I think it would be wise, we found a mechanism whereby when we're recouping return on that investment, that some or all of that money is replaced out of that increased revenue coming in into the redevelopment authority to keep that funded at some, you know, substantial level in any case.
That's what I was just going to say to you, Randy, that that money needs to not just get absorbed into the general fund as a, as a return of the city.
No, I would agree. I mean, we would get some benefit from that, from the general fund also. But, I mean, part of the redevelopment authority scope is they would naturally recoup some of that also. And theoretically, as that, as they are able to grow that and perform their work, that continues to compound, and we don't really run into a situation where, yes, still we need the, that's the goal. That's the goal.
Well, actually, to that point, and I hadn't really considered this, what what is the, I mean, Austin can answer this better, the legal mechanism that if we're passing through funding through redevelopment authority, and they are dispersing it, does it, it does not get returned to them? It gets returned to the city in the form of taxes, in this case, correct? Just that the redevelopment authority is providing funding to T. Ross from the city's ARPA funds that are then going to redevelopment authority. But it's not as though T. Ross would then in any way be paying that funding back to the, back to the redevelopment authority, it would be coming to the city in the form of taxes. Correct?
Yeah.
Obviously.
It would depend on if there are conditions tied to the funding. If they're not, and it's just, and it's just provided, yeah, the reinvestment and return on investment would presumably be taxes. I couldn't, if there, it's possible for there to be some mechanism for payment to be made back to the entity that actually dispersed, but that's something that would have to be agreed upon as a condition of the dispersment.
I guess that's kind of what I'm asking. Not that T. Ross would make payment back, but that the city would make payment back to redevelopment authority.
So.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do, yep.
That part, I don't know what sort of agreement we have executed currently with the redevelopment authority as part of this funding dispersment.
So we're, so not as far as this, but we're working on an agreement right now, Austin and Skip, myself and the RDA, between the redevelopment authority and land bank and the city. And so hopefully here in October, that'll be before city council for your review to sort of that point right there, not necessarily for this project, but projects moving forward, what that agreement might look like and how does the redevelopment authority and land bank, as we're, as the land bank or redevelopment authority are doing projects, and we're starting to recoup some of those funds, whether it's tax, revenue, whatever the case might be, to then come back into the redevelopment authority or a combination of redevelopment authority and tax, the general fund slash real estate tax. And then to, in order to continue to rehab or redevelop or remediate other properties. And so we're working through that agreement. We've had some other agreements that we looked at that didn't really fit. We didn't believe what we needed here. And so we're working through that right now, Austin and Skip and I. And so hopefully here in October, we'll have something to bring before the RDA land bank and also city council. And then, of course, at that time, we can tweak after you all review it and make changes, et cetera. But I know exactly what you're saying, and I think that's a good point.
I would prefer to see us tie the hands of future administrations on this one. So I would say that it would be in our best interest to make certain that it is proportioned with the revenue sent by the RDA, the community of economic development, returns to the RDA in the form of, basically, a return from the city on the newly generated taxes. That seems to me, you know, unless we can think of another mechanism. That seems to me, you know, unless we can think of another mechanism, otherwise, we're just gonna, we're gonna, the R D A is gonna be broke.
Right, which has been the case for a long time. So, and I think it's a two-pronged, or a second piece.
And if we don't have a legal mechanism for it, then it won't happen.
Right. Right. And a second piece of that is to also, of course, our R D A and land bank don't have any employees, and to utilize some of our community development in a very, very minor role. For example, some of this paperwork that might be associated with either acquisition or whatever the case might be, to utilize our community development office, the R D A would reimburse them, which would be a very nominal fee, of course, because it wouldn't take much time. But that would be part of this agreement, too, since the R D A and land bank currently do not have any employees. So that's another piece of this. But more importantly, the financial piece as far as, so we can continue to have projects moving forward.
Got it. Yeah, so, I mean, I'm not exactly sure how we, how we deal with this current project, but I think that clearly needs to be a part of any future projects. And even if we had a handshake agreement to commit some of the funding received back over the next couple of years in taxes to the R D A, I would feel better about that.
Yeah. Understood. I don't, you know, still need to go down this rabbit hole, but we're talking about the R D A, and it doesn't necessarily apply to this, but I guess it'll ask in any way. So has there been any interest from the R D A slash land bank to hire their own staff, one or two? I mean, there's plenty of money there to do that. I think when you talk about a self-sustaining R D A, that would be, I think, a part of the equation as well.
So I can't speak, obviously, on behalf of the R D A land bank, but I think the discussion currently, because they do not have any money, was how they could utilize the staff we have, at least initially. And then if they build up to a point where they're able to have funds for a staff, maybe part-time, again, I can't speak with them, that might be of interest to them. You know, right now, and historically, they have not been able to acquire properties or anything along those lines, because they've only had pennies. But now with the, of course, with the rescue plan funding, that's going to go to them once we have these agreements and such. I think it might be something that they would entertain, even if it's only a part-time employee, because they don't need, you know, it's not like they'd be doing acquisitions each day. So possibly, that's something Skip and I could ask them at the next R D A meeting to see that. But in interim, and for this agreement, to move some of these projects forward, to have our staff until they get to a point where they may be able to have their own staff or part-time staff.
Yeah. I would say to Derek's point, much like what we're looking at in Mr. Mackey's office in the finance department, which goes to the office in the finance department, there's a period, if the land bank slash redevelopment authority is to become a little bit of the city's kind of community development slash economic development arm, at some point, it would obviously be appropriate for them to have staff, and ideally to have a paramedic staff. But in that interim period, which may be several years, you know, rather than paying someone who doesn't necessarily have full-time employment, full-time obligations all the time, it might be wise for there to be a sharing of staff. And I'm assuming if that no longer was working to either the R D A or the city's advantage, somebody would red flag it and say, we want our own people.
Right. And I think also, at least here in the initial phases, allowing the city, both administration and council, to sort of dictate where some of these funds are going, I think that's part of that agreement, too, not just say, here's a million dollars, do whatever you want, where we sort of have still some say in it. I think that's maybe a third part of the agreement, where, that's why I think we want to utilize some of our community development between administration, city council, so we're saying, okay, well, you'll have five hundred thousand dollars in the R D A, but we still want to really have a little say in how that's appropriated.
Right. Well, yeah, clearly, we need to have a relationship amongst them, but we will continue to have a relationship, because you will be appointing them.
But no, I mean, and there's, I mean, I think we'll still have a relationship, and the R D A and land bank, they're good people. I don't think they're just gonna, you know, take the money and run, so to speak, but yeah, hopefully not. I mean, I can't speak for twenty years from now. I know Vince likes to look out into the future, so hopefully we can guarantee some, that our return on investment is in good hands for years to come.
Any other comments or questions related to the transfer, though? We got a little bit of a rabbit hole, sorry about that. Good discussion, though. All right. Hearing seen none, Mrs. Franklin, the motion for item six.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. Item seven, Mrs. Franklin.
An ordinance, transfer ordinance number four.
So a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. I'll welcome up Mr. Mackey. How are you, sir?
Counsel and Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank you all for your interest and participation. We're really looking forward to partnering with the city on this, and we hope that we can maybe do some more up there and help this first phase is successful. So thanks again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll keep you up to date as we go forward.
Thank you.
Please do. Thank you very much. Mr. Mackey, welcome.
Thank you, guys. So what I am doing here is I have a transfer coming from Equipment Fund and going to my part-time position and to my automation, automat, automat, automation area. Twelve thousand dollars coming from Equipment and being dispersed, ten thousand to part-time, two thousand to automation. So for the part-time position, this would cover someone full-time for the rest of the year. I will be including this in my budget for next year, that we make my part-time a full-time. This would be shared with finance department, so that we could have some shared duties and they could take some of the load off of them, as we currently only have one person in finance department. And then this will also help in increasing the efficiency that we collect taxes in the M B P and L S T areas. The automation is for eighteen hundred, eighteen hundred letters being sent out beginning of October. Those are about, for eighteen hundred different accounts that have a letter outstanding that we are hoping to find out what's going on with that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mackey. This was reviewed in finance.
This was reviewed in finance. I think to a general approval, sorry, it's a little hard to gauge the temperature in finance now that we don't vote anymore. I think all of us have been somewhere or another been touched by the labor shortage going on right now, and the treasurer's office is having much of the same issue. A position that is part-time with no benefits is we're having a hard time drawing and retaining an employee, which makes it hard to train someone and hard to wind up with a reliable individual in there for a lengthy period of time. So I think this, the idea of sharing responsibilities between finance and the treasurer's office allows us to make the best use of a full-time employee who's not necessarily required all the time in the treasurer's office, but often and simultaneously, right, provide, hopefully, a quick solution to some of our shortage of labor in the finance department, and then we'll add other positions there as time goes on.
Just to give you an idea, we've had five people in this position in the past two years.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you, Ms. Mealy. Any other comments or questions related to this item from members of council? All right. Hearing seen none, Mrs. Franklin, the motion.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. Move to item eight, Mrs. Franklin.
This is a real estate interim exoneration.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Back to you.
This is for one fifty-one East Third Street. This is exonerating their interim bill for nine months. It was going from fourteen hundred down to zero dollars, and I believe this is going to last for at least the rest of the year, and this would be a LERTA.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mackey. This did not go to a committee, so I'll just open the floor for any comments or questions on this item from members of council. Ms. Mealy?
My assumption would be if this property is operating under LERTA, that they're on a ten-year, is it ten years? Tax payment schedule, yeah, anyway, they're on a multi-year tax statement schedule. But, but that was truly a labor of love that they undertook down there on East Third Street. And then I think it qualifies quite well for LERTA as economic development of the neighborhood, so.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Hearing seen none, Mrs. Franklin, the motion.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven oh. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you for your time.
Item nine, Mrs. Franklin.
Resolution to commit to funding for the Greenways Trails and Recreation Program for Basin Street River Walk Connection.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Welcome back, Mayor Slaughter.
Yes, good evening, once again, Council President Yoder, Vice President Katz, members of council administration. What you have before you is actually a resolution that you have previously already passed. D C D came back, and it appears as though we're going to get this grant award, but they wanted it to be clear in the initial resolution of that Peg Woodring and myself, the city controller and mayor, with our names, that we are to execute the documents, which we are, of course, via the resolution, but they wanted that spelled out in here specifically. So there's nothing that changed with any part of the resolution or any of the figures or anything like that. D C D just asked if we could essentially add that one paragraph there in that cover page. So other than that, nothing has changed. And of course, we said that, or I'm sorry, D C, yeah, this is D C D, or no, D C D, sorry. Yeah, so anyway, that's the only thing that's changed.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Slaughter. Again, this didn't go to a committee. It was a pretty quick, simple change. Any comments or questions, other members of council? All right. Hearing seen one, Mrs. Franklin, the motion.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. Item ten, Mrs. Franklin.
Resolution modifying the twenty twenty-one C D B G C D action plan.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Welcome, Skip.
Good evening, good sir.
Good evening, President Yoder and members of council. Back before you again, talking about doing a substantial amendment, and before you tonight is the one for the C V funds that the city received with the assistance of C D C O G and, and I represented the C D C O G is on Zoom if we have any questions for Mr. Dombrowski. Otherwise, it's pretty simple. We allocated the same amount of funds, but we put most of it to recreational activities or two basketball courts and a recreation project in the Newberry Park area or elsewhere. And it was duly advertised, and it was posted for thirty days review. No comments from the public were received, and I'm here to answer any questions, so is Tyler.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This was reviewed in finance.
This was reviewed in finance, and the city, obviously, is allocating the vast majority of the extra pandemic funds that we received through community development to outdoor city recreation, which is obviously a sense of abuse. The funding will be restricted to low to moderate income areas, L M I areas in the city, and which is consistent with all community development funding. The only question that came out of finance was why we weren't committing this four hundred and eighty thousand dollars to the existing splash park that we're currently constructing.
It is not in an L M I area.
Shaw Place is not L M I. Right. But because this funding obviously has many more strings attached to it than the art performance. So that said, the splash park activity called out in this form is a bit of a placeholder, as Mr. Mealy says. So, right, does not need to be utilized for a splash park, could be utilized for multiple other things. I would assume potentially improvements to the existing swimming pool or something like that, presumably could not, would have to be utilized for new construction, Mr. Mealy.
It could be used for rehabilitation, it just needs to be within an L M I area.
Got it. So we determined that Shaw Place Park is the only park in the city that's not L M I?
I believe there's one other park.
Just Shaw.
Got it.
Assumption, I believe, is wrong. I did check on the one we talked about, that is still in the L M I area.
Got it. Okay. Yes, so that, I think that was pretty much the totality of the discussion of finance on the second.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy. Any other comments or questions from other members of council? Hearing seen none, Mrs. Franklin, the motion.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. Move to item eleven, Mrs. Franklin.
Resolution to amend the contract between the City of Williamsport and C D C O G of Governments.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Back to you.
Good evening again. This project was for the substantial amendment to the C D funds, which was outside the original scope with C D C O G, and they're requesting an increase in funding to have completed this project in the amount of twenty-seven hundred dollars. All comes out of C D B G funds, no direct tax implication to the city.
Thank you, Skip. This was also reviewed in finance.
Yes, and it was not all that much discussion. I think the only item that we brought up was our relationship with C D C O G at this point, and he's been about nine months, I think, and at the year mark, at least, I was in the opinion that it would be nice to understand a little bit more sort of the financial impact on the community development office and how it's working out for the city. All reports have it it's working out well, but.
It is working out well. We plan to have a full report as part of our budget presentation, as to how we work, are working with C D C O G and how we can potentially work more efficiently with C D C O G with our C D B G program.
I think that's what's of interest to me, is how we can maximize the efficiency of our community development delivery through C D C O G, which is doing it for multiple communities.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy. Any comments or questions from other members of council? All right. Hearing seen none, Mrs. Franklin, the motion, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven oh. Thank you, Skip.
Thank you.
Move to item twelve, Mrs. Franklin.
A resolution authorizing the execution of municipal winter traffic services agreement between the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation and the City of Williamsport.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Mr. Livermore, good evening, sir.
Good evening, members of council. What you have before you is a resolution authorizing the execution of municipal winter traffic service agreement between the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation and the City of Williamsport. So basically, what this is, it's something we do every year. Penn Dot gives us money to plow some of their, take care of some of their Penn Dot roads throughout the city. This year's dollar amount is ten thousand, six hundred, sixty-eight dollars and forty-two cents for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three snow season. Um, like I said, it's something we do every year. There's a few roads throughout the city that is PennDOT owned, but we maintain, take care of. So, um, this was reviewed in public works.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Lovemore. This was reviewed in public works.
Yes, it was. Uh, Scott, uh, is this the same dollar amount that we get every year?
No, it, it fluctuates. I, I don't have last year's. Um, it goes up, it depends on the miles of road we do, which is not a real miles, but in the back of the package, it shows the roads we do. It's a few hundred feet here on this street and a few hundred feet on Campbell Street.
I thought it'd be the same every year.
It's, well, so it costs more to do it. So it'll, it'll fluctuate a little bit. Well, and you know, so salt costs more every year. Obviously the allocation will eventually go up slowly, but not a whole lot, not a big dollar amount.
I know. We, we go through this every year, but it is, uh, you know, and the goal situation that we have, which is good. It's a working relationship.
Yep, yep.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Katz. Any comments or questions from other members of council? Mr. Allison.
Um, yeah, just a couple, um, is Grimesville Boulevard, one of those?
I think it's Grimesville, Fourth Street.
Fourth Street, Campbell Street, Third Street, Pepperin Street, uh, Ridge Ave, the Grimesville, Via Bella, Basin Street, Via Bella to Basin Street. Um, so if we have a particularly bad winter and there's more plowing, um, is there a mechanism where to get more?
No, no, that, this is just their allocation that they help us with. A lot of times too, if they're coming up the road and we haven't got there yet, they'll hit it. This is just to help them out. So it's not our responsibility. It's still their road. Um, they still take care of it, but no.
Well, it's kind of a stopgap for them to have us.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions? Here you see none. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Scott. Uh, move to item 13, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution executing agreement between Lycoming County and the City of Williamsport for Act 13 funding.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Mr. Sander, the floor is yours. Good evening.
Yes, good evening, everybody. So what you have before you is a resolution executing agreement between the city and Lycoming County. Uh, this is an older agreement that started before my time. I think it was, uh, 2018 and ended in December of 2021. Uh, this is for old city funding where the county was gracious enough to pick up the tab for our local share. Um, this was written, this agreement you have before you was written by the county and reviewed by, uh, our sister and for the city. The county needed an updated agreement and, uh, that's what we have before you. Like I said, it expired in December of 2021. Um, most notable projects, uh, for funding for the, the county's paying the match on would be the, uh, the DeSavos Block, as I call it. It was awarded a couple of weeks ago. And also the Riverwalk Connector that Mary Slaughter alluded to earlier. Uh, this was reviewed in finance, uh, on Tuesday.
Thank you, Mr. Sander. This was reviewed in finance.
Uh, this was reviewed in finance. Um, nothing terribly exciting. We do currently have the funding to return it to the county. So there will be a holdup in getting a new, larger amount of funding. So, um, which I think was about the only question that we really asked. Um, uh, perhaps a bit of an unusual situation, but understandable given that this was previously act 89 funded. It is transitioning back to 13 that we have to give one amount back to the city, the second amount, the second higher amount in return. And thanks to the county for their continued generosity on this project. Um, we're seeing a lot of very positive things happen down there. Um, some of them, uh, still with Lycoming College is one of the drivers and then, and then some independent projects like the, the state corporation that they saw, so.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy. Any other comments, questions from other members of council on the resolution? Hearing seen none. Mrs. Frank on the motion.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Johnny. Item 14, Mrs. Frank.
Minimal municipal obligation for the year 2023.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Good evening, Molly.
Good evening, President Yoder, members of council. Tonight I'm presenting to you a request to fund the minimum municipal obligation for the city's three pension funds. Um, we have the firefighter's pension fund, the police pension, pension fund, and the officers and employees pension fund. Um, this would be funding that those, them for 2023. It will be built into the 2023 budget. And the total MMO for 2023 would be $4,381,381. Uh, the, the figures were calculated by Mock and Hop Benefits Group. And Sue Trout from Mock and Hop is on the call tonight if you have any questions for her.
Thank you, Molly. Uh, this was reviewed in finance also. Ms. Mealy.
Uh, this was reviewed in finance and as, as you can see the document, documentation, um, we're really benefiting from a bit of a drop in the OME pension obligation, um, which I would imagine that Sue Trout can mock it up and explain much better than I can because I've already forgotten why. Do you want to explain it?
Uh, the removal of RVT employees, uh, reduces that, that obligation.
Mm-hmm. Um, but, uh, but, um, the MMO has increased and we're, we're still basing this year's MMO on the 2021 valuation performed by Mock and Hop. Um, there's a chance that we will be basing the 2024 MMO on, um, the 2023 valuation. Um, but according to Ms. Trout, we, hopefully we won't. Because things are probably not going to be looking good on, on the 2023 value. We, uh, we do evaluation every two years and from then on, um, predicate our, um, minimum municipal obligation on that valuation. But the snapshot on 1-1-2023 is not likely to be quite as rosy as the one on 1-1-21, which in turn was not quite as rosy as the one on 1-1-2019. So, um, uh, that said, um, I'll, I'll just say what Jonathan Williamson used to say before me and what, um, I feel sort of obligated to say every year when we review this item, which is, um, that a, a good chunk of this money of $4,381,000, $4,381,000 that we're committing from this year's budget, less, um, whatever the, the state contribution is, um, each other is speaking around 1.3 million. So we're looking at about $3 million from this year's budget and the city's total budget is 25 to 26 million. So bear that in mind. Um, about 10% of the city's total budget, um, goes to pension obligation, much of which is the direct result of prior generations not setting aside funding to pay for the pensions that they were handing out to prior employees. Um, uh, which is why I think so many of us argue so strenuously for setting aside funding to pay for maintenance on things when we, when we begin the process of taking those things. Why I, why I say to the police that I'd like to see them build the funding to replace the body cameras into next year's budget so that when we need to replace the body cameras in five years, we have the money. Um, because, uh, because I, I don't want to stick, um, my kid or somebody else's kid who's on council in 20 years with $3 million obligation because we didn't bother to fund it. So, um, anyway, uh, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's not a huge chunk of money, but it's 10% of our budget. And, and, and hopefully at some point, um, that will be paid down and, and the city will be operating on a year-to-year pension, which will be substantially lower, although not, not existent. That's all. We can't say no, so.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy. Any comments or questions from other members of council? All right. Hearing seen none. Mrs. Frank on the motion.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Molly.
Thank you.
Item 15, certificate of appropriateness from PARB. We have two, um, one for, one for 427 West Fourth Street. Um, some replacements of roof sections, um, side repairs, seal gutters, and then a second one for 730, 732 West Third Street. Um, some asphalt shingles, um, some sheathing on roof ledge, uh, et cetera. Uh, is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Welcome back, Skip.
Um, again, good evening. President Yoder and members of council. Um, the description of all the work was presented to you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, nothing unusual there except for the demolition of the garage on the Third Street property. Uh, but it's a newer garage. It was not a historic building. And it's in total decay and falling down. He's going to remove it and use it for off-street parking. Uh, other than that, I'll answer any specific questions you may have.
Any comments or questions for, or these certificates of appropriateness? Hearing seen none. Mrs. Frank on the motion.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Skip. Item 16, except for filing, we have the finance committee meeting from August 9th, transit oversight from March 29th and April 26th, and Veterans Memorial Park from July 11th, all 2022. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions on the minutes we're filing? Hearing seen none. Mrs. Frank on the motion.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Item 17, announcements. Our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held, uh, in two weeks' time, right here on Thursday, October 13th, 7:00 PM. Upcoming meetings, Monday, October 3rd at noon is our planning commission. Monday, October 10th, 4:00 PM is the recreation commis- commission. Tuesday, October 11th, 1:00 PM finance committee, 2:30 PM public works committee. Wednesday, October 12th, 9:00 AM economic revitalization. 11:30 AM public safety and next Thursday, October 13th is our city council meeting. Um, move to item 18, comments. Are there any comments from members of council this evening or anything? Uh, I'll just give some kudos to our city clerk. I got a phone call today from a constituent and, uh, was really happy with the customer service that Janice gave. And, uh, I get those calls for a pretty consistent basis or an email. So, um, you do a good job. We're lucky to have you and thank you very much for helping our constituents. So it's been pretty crazy over the past couple of years specifically too, with the move. And I know you get a lot of those also. You're, you're really helpful. So thank you. Mr. Byder.
Uh, I just have a question. If, Mr. Lovemore, if you wouldn't mind, uh, stepping up on this one. If you could let, uh, us in the public know when fall cleanup starts. Thank you.
Nice.
I was gonna say something. So I don't have, we don't have, we haven't put it out yet. It'll probably be another week or so, but, um, it's going to start on the 24th of October this year. I know the questions are going to start coming flying in, so I figured I'd get ahead of it now. Um, we will put a release out. Letting them know, let everybody know when we're going to start and when we'll be back. So I know the leads are flying now, so I figured I'd better say something. So.
I got two questions on my walk this morning, so.
Thank you both.
I got one more.
Yep, absolutely, please.
Um, it's Way's Garden. I'm sure them questions are still out and about. Sidewalk is done. Uh, we finished our tops on and seed them all today. Um, trees will be put in once we get those in in the first or second week of November, if I'm not mistaken. So, um, that is all opened up for the public to now enjoy, not trip.
Thank you, Mr. Lovemore. Any other members of council have any comments or anyone? All right. Any, anybody else from the administration? Okay. Uh, any members of the public have any comments? I don't see anybody, but I'm just making sure. I didn't know if anyone was sitting behind John or Molly that I couldn't see. They were blocking. Not, uh.
Do you mean everybody wasn't fascinated and we stick around for the end of the meeting?
It's a short meeting. You never know.
It's true.
Uh, no comments from the news media either. I don't see anybody. I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Have a good evening.